All right, so we'll go ahead and open the public meeting for the planning commission July 6th at 6:30. We'll rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business is roll call of commissioners and we'll go to Angela for that.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Commissioner Walthius?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
Commissioner Branson? Commissioner White? All present.
All right, at this point in our meeting, this is the time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the planning commission with anything that is not on the agenda for tonight, would this would be the time to do so? And it looks like we have one. I would invite Jenny Savage to pop on up for us. And if you could, after you have a seat, if you could just state your, oh, right here, right here, yep. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that would be fabulous.
My name is Jenny Savage and I live at sixteen oh eight thirteenth Avenue. And the topic that I would like to, or the request that I would like to make is in regards to the the city ordinance that requires carport or garage for a single dwelling unit. My husband and I, we have a very open household and we have people that live in and out of our house as we help them heal. And we would like to create a living space in our garage. But we are unable to at this time because of the codes where you have to have a carport or a whatever. And so my lot is standard, it's fifty by hundred feet and it's like fifteen hundred square foot house, three bedroom, two bath. And we, so it's, that's a pretty standard thing. So I'm sure that I'm not the only household who would like to create a living space for maybe they're not about letting recovering addicts live in their house. Maybe they have like, well, I mean, even my in-laws, whenever they get older, I would like to be able to, they're not in a financially great spot. I would love to be able to have that be living space. It does rain a lot here in the valley, but a carport or a garage having that as a requirement should be, in my opinion, should not be a mandatory thing. That should be a preference thing. And also it feels like a barrier for more ADUs or more of that sort of thing to be done in the Sweet Home area. It feels more like a barrier to circumnavigate the state thing that they sent out that was like, yeah, go for it. And so my request is that it's just considered to, to be redone because as all of you know, the, our homeless, you know, it's an issue that would, that everyone has, but, but it's a, it's a, this is a way where we can have more people either opening up their homes or, or it's an available thing to rent out a piece of, of your property that's already there to provide housing for people who need it.
Anybody on the council have any questions for Savage in regards to this request?
Is this a business? Are you, is it a certification that you have or a license that you have to do?
No, we're just crazy. We, we we have, we love people.
So I'll ask a quick question too, is, are you looking to convert your garage on a permanent basis or would this just be a temporary thing?
We would like to do it on a permanent basis so that it's like its own little studio apartment. So we don't know for sure if we're gonna do, if we're gonna like actually ADU, like have everything, like units and everything split. There are benefits to that. But the reason why I'm here before you is if I'm having this dilemma, there are other people who I'm sure are having this dilemma as well.
So you currently have a garage?
Yes, we have a garage.
Is it attached to your home or detached?
It is attached to the home.
Okay.
So it is a corner lot and so it has to be so many feet in from the road. It has to be so many feet from the back of the property. And we're, we're pretty much at our max. And so as of right now, there's no way for us to legally have that be a living space. And the, the reason is that I'm just somehow required to be able to park my car indoors or under a cover when I do not use it in that way.
Do we allow ADUs to be attached or do they need to be detached?
ADUs can be attached or detached.
Okay.
And there's no garage requirement for ADUs, just for the primary dwelling.
It said, yeah, it says that if it were extra living space, would they be required to have additional parking? No.
The, the parking requirement for a single family home is the same regardless of the size of the home. Or the number of bedrooms. It's just two off-street parking spaces per single family home.
Okay. But there will be two homes?
If.
Within ADU?
If it was an ADU.
You have to have one extra parking.
One extra parking space for the.
You do not have to have a garage or carport for the ADU, but you do have to one extra off-street parking space for the ADU.
Okay. So two for the home and then one for the ADU. So you would be able to accommodate that?
Off-street parking, yes.
Okay.
So I just have a question because you were talking about barriers. So just hypothetically, if you were able to convert the garage space, the way you like, would it be a burden for you to make a carport?
No, I just, I, it is my understanding that I cannot make the carport because there has to be fifteen feet from the building on the back of the property. I have space for a carport there. Do I need a carport there? No. But I also am, it's my understanding that I'm not allowed to do that.
So you have a garage?
Yeah.
Why do we require a carport in addition to the garage?
No, there is. Yeah, she, she's asking about converting, wanting to convert the garage into living space.
And then.
If she were to do that, she would have to replace the garage with either a garage or a carport because that's what the requirement says is garage or carport.
I would have to build another garage or
Got it.
Provide a carport that I am not needing.
Okay.
That I can't actually put there because I don't have enough space to do.
Okay, so we allow stick-built homes to convert their garage to living space as long as they have additional car or enough.
So we've, we've had this comment before where someone is wanting to convert their garage. And in one case, I believe they did so, but they put in a carport to replace that garage. And that's what the code requires.
You can convert your garage, your attic, any of that, but if you convert your garage, you have to replace it with a garage and or compartment. If you're turning your current garage, the existing into a living space.
Okay.
You still have to provide a garage or carport plus your off-street parking.
Okay, so my question would be, what is the benefit of requiring someone to have a garage?
I think a lot of it do, is due to eliminating open storage. People collecting stuff outside and just having that clutter to where as people drive past the house, there's just stuff stacked outside all over the place. So that is the main thing. Part of that code comes down from the state as well, not just Sweet Home.
Okay.
It had just been a long-established building standard.
It's interesting though, because if you've been around anyone who hordes, it doesn't matter how much storage space they have, it's gonna look ridiculous.
Yeah.
And so we have code enforcement to handle that if it's made.
Yeah, right, right. And that's, yes.
I'm just saying, there's a mechanism for that. You know, people who are in, have stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this can continue to be a discussion amongst the planning commission in the, in the days and weeks to come. But I think, thank you so much for coming down. Yeah.
Before, before she subsay, can I clarify, is this the same code that we discussed a couple months ago?
Yes.
A portion of it, yes.
And at that time, had we researched other jurisdictions to see what theirs are and we're in line with what other jurisdictions are doing?
I did most of the surrounding area and then other cities our size outside of there. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate what you want to do with the space and hopefully something somehow can be solved to help you do so.
Yeah.
But for now, we thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point in our meeting, we're gonna look at meeting minutes both from May 4th and June 15th. We did not have a quorum last time to pass the May 4th minutes. So if anybody has anything in regard to corrections, alterations, or additions to the May 4th meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept the May 4th minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second since everyone is here. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. As are none, those are approved. And moving on to the June 15th meeting minutes.
So the June 15th minutes, and which is for consistency, because we're starting to put excuse after the people who are not present. We need that on this.
On the June 15th one. Okay.
With those changes, I move to approve that planning commission meeting minutes from June 15th, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Kate, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the June 15th minutes? AI? AI?
Abstain.
Oh, abstain, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have our public hearing application VR twenty-three dash zero-two. We will open public hearing at six forty-two. All right, the applicant is seeking a variance to allow an eight-foot security fence for the site, for site security and to match the existing fence. Subject property is a pre-existing public facility in the recreational commercial zone. Fences and walls located less than five feet from a street line shall not exceed a maximum height of three and one-half feet when constructed of solid materials or four feet when constructed of open materials. As per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five two point oh five oh A one. Fences and walls located more than five feet from the subject property line shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Interior side and rear yards, fences and walls located at a property line not abutting a street shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Barbed wire, barbed wire may only be used in, may be used inside the city limits as per code seventeen point five two point oh five oh. So guess with that, well.
In a word only.
Did I leave?
That isn't there.
Barbed wire may be used inside the city limits. So striking the word only. Thank you, Henry.
All right, we'll kick it over to the sports desk. Staff report.
Thank you. It took me a second to put that in my brain. All right, as Chairman Parker said, this is a application for seeking a variance to allow an eight-foot security fence for site security and to match the existing fence. The applicant is the city of Sweet Home. The variance is necessary because of the subject development code provisions does not account for special unique physical circumstances of the subject site, existing development patterns or adjacent land uses. A legal law determination may be sufficient evidence of hardship for purposes of approving a variance. Staff findings, the subject properties in the public facility zone adopted June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Fences and walls located more than five feet from the street property line shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five two zero five zero A two and barbed wire may be used in the city limits. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen five two zero five zero C. There is an existing eight-foot fence with seven foot of cyclone fencing and one foot of barbed wire. The applicant is requesting the variance to be consistent in height and materials with the existing security fence.
And if I interrupt you for just a second, I'm sorry, as a point of order, I've, I've skipped a couple steps. So if you would allow, I will go backwards. So after reading the application summary, the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff from a staff report, Lord. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In regards to this application, does any of the commission have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
No, I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No, no.
I have none. Any expertise information?
No.
No, for me as well. Thank you, Angela. I'm sorry if I'll kick back to you.
Probably why I gave you the deer in the headlights look. All right.
That's too quick.
We'll jump down to B. Such variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant possessed by the owner of other properties in the same vicinity or district. An economic hardship shall not be the basis of a variance for a variance request. And staff findings. For the applicant's comments, the fence height is necessary for the security and safety of water treatment plant. The request shall allow the applicant to have a fence fence consistent in height and materials with the existing, existing security fence on the property. C, the authorization of such variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property in the vicinity or district in which the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. A staff finding, staff finds that the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property in the vicinity or district in which the property is located. The variance does not conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. D, the need for variance is not self-imposed by the applicant or property owner. For example, the variance request does not arise as a result of a property line adjustment or land division approval previously granted to the applicant. And the staff findings per the applicant's comments, the request for a variance to the fence height was identified as a needed facility improvement after an evaluation in accordance with the AWIA Act. The variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate the identified hardship. Staff findings, staff finds that the variance to the fence height is the minimum that would alleviate the identified hardship identified in the evaluation of the site. F, all applicable building code requirements and engineering design standards shall be met. Staff findings. The applicant shall comply with the standards in the Sweet Home Municipal Code seven point five two fencing and screening. Staff recommendations, staff finds the applicant has method criteria listed above in section three, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. The planning commission will hold a plant, public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. The appeal period, staff recommends the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a twelve-day appeal period from the date that the decision is mailed. Order after the planning commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order shall memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval, if the condition is approved. Motion. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application VR twenty-three dash zero-two and thereby permit the variance for the subject lot located at fifteen hundred forty-seventh Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon nine seven three eight six. Identified on Lynn County's assessor's map as thirteen SO one E twenty-eight D tax lot two thirteen. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application VR twenty-three dash zero-two and thereby deny the request for a variance for the subject lot located at fifteen hundred forty-seventh Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon nine seven three eight six, identified on the Lynn County Assessor's Map as thirteen SO one E twenty-eight D tax lot two thirteen. Adopting the following finding of fact, you must specify the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. Any questions for staff?
Just for clarification, the fact that the quest for variance is just due to the additional one foot of barbed wire. It's allowed in the commercial zone, shoot operational, and the little abutting lot to the south where the mobile home park is. Commercial, not residential, is that correct?
So it's for the eight-foot height?
The total height, because the seven foot of the normal fence is allowable. It's the additional one foot.
Correct.
Yeah. But you have any additional questions for staff?
No, I have none.
All right, so at this time, we invite our applicant forward or representative of the applicant, if they wish to come forward. Don't want to, they don't have to.
Excuse me. No, I, I thank you. First of all, I want to thank you guys for what you do. I know you put a lot of time in and, and this is important process for the city. So we were required by EPA as of required of the America Water Infrastructure Act of two thousand eighteen. Out of that, what they were requiring is that any community water system over thirty-three hundred people look at risk and resilient assessment and also develop an emergency response plan for our system. This is in response to, if you may heard, somebody was, their cyber was hacked in Florida quite a few years ago, got into their water system. And so this has been on the minds of a lot of people of not just water agencies, power companies. And so we were required by EPA to go through this process and we did, it was at a cost of about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It was a big survey, a big document. We had them look at a lot of different things. But mainly some of the physical barriers, the electronic, the computers, we're actually embarking on updating our entire SCADA system in conjunction with the wastewater plant, really put a lot of barriers in front of people that just can't hack. And also we've brought on an integrator record, which is the automation group out of engineering. And they are like our computer gurus that connect our, our devices with our, our operators and then look and see how things are operating in the forefront as that's happening. So we went through this assessment, a couple of things that came out of it is our fencing on the water treatment plant. It, we have really good fencing, but it comes up from the west and the east and then it goes right to the front of the water building itself. And you can just drive right in and park right up on that building. In the front of that building, we also have windows. Lot of rocks around. And so it was identified that the structure itself needed to have a full enclosure around it. And so that came out of this, other than updating the SCADA, we wanted then make that extra buffer, bring the fence up on that upper mobile home park. Also a little bit better access with some gates, but it's gonna be like and kind and match exactly what's already there. And that's it. We, we had to do this and we're, we're hoping that you allow us to continue, so. Any comments? No?
Any of the commissioners have any questions for our representative?
During normal business hours, would the gate be open?
I think what we're looking at right now, are we gonna do electric fence or give me manual?
It's gonna be an electric gate.
So it'll be card read and so it will close behind the employees as they come in.
Well, the public really would not have access.
No, that's the ideas. And really, we, we keep the building locked anyway. We don't want public just walking in. It's not like City Hall, it's even Public Works has become the building itself. We just don't want people walking in there. We want to do business out of this building. We just don't want Joe Public walking in for whatever reason into our plant that everybody consumes, right? It's the only utility that our public actually ingests. They get it on their skin, they wash in it. So there's just a lot more things that we have to do in, in, in the relationship of security and then also cybersecurity. It's even getting more and more. So the idea is that we, we create not only the barrier for the building, but we're creating a barrier for employees and other things and just keep people out.
So if someone wants to make contact with you, it has got to be through City Hall.
It would be through City Hall, through my, you can go online, you can find Stevens' information, you can find mine, you can also get ahold of Kelsey. And that's how we do it anyway. Our vendors know to contact Steven in advance.
The building's, the building's currently locked. It doesn't actually change anything for public access, except for people can't walk up to the front door. And honestly, when they walk up to the front door, we typically don't answer unless we know who they are. Because we don't know who they are and it's a secure facility and they, they shouldn't be able to walk up to the front door. So we're just trying to correct things from original.
So putting, putting the fence up against the back of the trailer park is really the main extension. The rest of it is just it's already legal for it to be eight foot. It's behind the trailer park, that's the question.
Correct, it would be continuing the existing fence on the west side and east side going south until you reach our property line. And then you would go along that ridge at the top of that, that, that ridge. Kind of put in a buffer, that eight-foot buffer would also help us with the trailer park itself. We have a lot of children that live in that neighborhood. We get a lot of rocks, we get in our parking, I mean, literally, when I talk, say, rocks, I'm talking twenty a day. They ride their scooter, they're just using that hillside in our parking lot as a place to play. We don't need people in there. And, and that's again, one of the things that was identified that we just don't have a buffer. Anybody can come down and pick up any of those rocks those kids had thrown down and throw them through that window and gain access to our water. And granted, anybody that really wants to do it, they probably could do it anyway. But we're gonna do what we can to try to make that buffer as, as strong as possible. And we also have alarms and cameras on the building itself that do function. So just, it just gives us a little bit more buffer. And then as a part of this, this assessment that we did, it's a checkbox that it's identified and then we come back and that, we've now made adjustments for that. One of the things that we're required to do with this assessment is not just do it one time. We have to pick this back up in June thirtieth. We had to resubmit the, the assessment on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so we had to have it all done by then. So every five years, we have to pull it off the shelf. We have to go through it again, ensure that we're, we've not only done the things that we said that we complied with it, but we've also identified the things that we complied and notified EPA on those things. And so we have to submit this thing every five years. We won't have to spend the money like we did. We won't have to do the things that we did before. But we have to assure that it's looked at and that we're still kind of hitting those check marks, so.
Do you think the barbed wire is necessary on the part of the fence that's going to be abutting the trailer park? I'm just thinking about, you're saying there's lots of children. Right now they play in that area. All of a sudden, there's gonna be a big tall fence with barbed wire in their backyard. Is it unnecessary?
Sounds horrible, absolutely.
Behind there?
I absolutely say yes. First of all, the parents should keep them off that fence.
Well, no, I, I understand that that's, that, that's not their property. So we want to keep them. I'm just, I'm just thinking about their the quality of the place that they live.
Sure.
What we're gonna turn it into by putting a seven-foot high fence with barbed wire in their backyard instead of the trees that they used to have.
Yeah, I mean, you can order us to do whatever, not do it, put slots in. I think it's, it's a necessity for the community. I wouldn't be up here asking if I didn't. I wouldn't be spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars on a, a survey to, to prove that we're at least hitting the check marks. And then start another fifty thousand to make these improvements, take down trees, also adjust the fence line. There's a few other things that came out, another hundred fifty thousand, we're actually doing the redoing the whole SCADA system. Don't like to get into these because that's usually what happens when you start doing surveys, you're required to start doing things. But we're gonna, we're gonna try to hit these boxes as much as possible. And so we'll comply with whatever you guys want us to do.
So I think the other point though is certainly the local neighborhood is important, but we're talking about the greater good for the citizens of Sweet Home. And the balance there, to me, really shifts to the other ten thousand people who are getting this water.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm totally leaning on the favor side of this conversation. I'm all for this. And I would probably debate it the other way if it went the other way. There's just certain things that EPA don't mess around with. After nine eleven, I, I was with a different agency down in Southern California, went through a whole vulnerability assessment. And to go through that whole practice and how much that cost. And we had to seal this document in double folders and send it to an address in Washington that then took that out and then sent it to another agency. It's just weird how they do some of these things. An address in Washington that then took that out and then sent it to another agency. It's just weird how they do some of these things. There's a lot of bad people in the world right now that would love to get, maybe it's not Sweet Home, maybe it's, you know, like Los Angeles, Seattle, something like that. But everybody across the, the United States is being asked to tighten down their security on their water systems to protect everybody. And that's it.
It'll be a seven foot chain link with a foot of barbed wire?
I think it's not quite like, like if you go and get lumber, they're usually in half, like six and a half is seven foot. So there'll be another. Yeah. And then you would have that, that barbed wire strand, those inches in between that we normally have.
And it'll be chain link?
Chain link.
Okay.
Yeah, heavy gauge chain.
Won't look like a prison yard.
No, it's going to look exactly if there's, I don't know if we provided pictures, it would look exactly as it does now. It just extended.
So my question is, is the chain link, is it the standard fence fabric, the two inch square holes or is it?
Yeah.
Scale like they would use on the substations and things.
Well, it, it's, it's standard chain link, but it's the heavy, heavy gauge. It's, there's different gauges of.
Right.
And it's not a residential one that you can just come and cut. It's, I mean, you can cut it. We've had fencing cut before, but. It's heavy, heavy gauge. It's a lot thicker than what you know.
Like you said, I mean, if somebody wants to get in, they will find a way.
I mean.
So this, this is going to deter ninety-nine percent of the.
It's going to do the small stuff. If somebody really wanted to get in and do some things. You know, we're just trying to first put a buffer, then they come in, we get motioned and we can got them on camera. If they break in, then, you know, we got alarms going off. It's just an extra barrier to help us kind of protect the structure itself. A lot of things, eventually we're going to be coming back and putting generator on the side of it. We're even going to want to protect some things some more. So. I don't think our world is changing in that environment much anymore.
Well, I can see where putting a fence up there along the back of the trailer park where the kids have been used to playing there. I know their little minds are going to take this as a challenge and how do we get over it? So the chain with the barbed wire on the top would definitely be a deterrent for the little ones to. Little ones, I mean. Junior high, so to try to climb over it just because they're. So I can see that.
Anybody else on the commission have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any more questions.
Right.
Excusable.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll continue on with our due diligence and see if there's any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. In the room. As there are none, we will go on to opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of the application. There are none. Neutral testimony, those not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. There are none. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing. For application VR twenty-three oh two for discussion amongst the planning commission at seven oh three. First of all, Commissioner, I do agree with you as far as the kids playing and up against.
Going to be really, going to change that neighborhood, that trailer park.
Going to change.
Really rough in that area now with the barbed wire.
Yeah.
Fence in the back.
I, I mean, I don't know how feasible it would even be to. To offset that fence into the property line a little bit and what issues that would cause based on the hill. I have seen a few places where you put a fence at the bottom of the hill and it's not as opposing as if it was the, the top of the hill. Because it looks smaller and so the challenge becomes more, more easy, at least in seeming. As much as I don't like to see it right up against the neighborhood as well.
Slatted on that side without the barbed wire. So that it's more like a security privacy fence, because it's a budding residential area. The rest, like I understand why it needs to be fenced in and that it's important to keep it secure. I think having the entire property fenced in will create that security. The deterrent with or without barbed wire. Think barbed wire makes it look scarier, like it's more official, but I, as far as the fence goes, it's less of a deterrent. Than just the fence. But I understand barbed wire around the rest, if that's what they feel is important. I just feel like because it abuts that residential area. So I'd like to be considerate of the people who live there and what their. What their quality of neighborhood will be while we make these changes.
Yeah, I, yeah. Who else have anything?
Because if somebody came to your house and said, sorry, this is the Public Works building, we got to put it up for security. You're going to have a eight foot. Fence of barbed wire. Now that's going to be your backyard. We'd hear a lot from homeowners about that. So. That's just my concern.
No, I, I, I can see your point, but I also think that the security of our water system. Outweighs. Having the chain link with the barbed wire in their backyard. I, I can see where it's necessary and I know I wouldn't like it in my backyard. But I also don't want someone climbing over a fence and getting into the water system.
So it looked like it might affect four homes. Just looking at this map.
Yeah.
I would probably rather be able to see through the fence and see the trees and what's going on the other side. Rather than having the slats. I think I'd feel enclosed more.
As far as the privacy slats in the fence.
Yeah, I wouldn't want privacy slats. See the view from behind.
That's something we could ask too. I didn't even think about that as far as, you know, is that vegetation going to remain or is it going to be just cleared out and the fence put up? So it's more. Open and airy, or is it going to continue to have the vegetation and the fence just be put on the property line? To where you would get that kind of cozier feeling as opposed to the slats. So we could ask if you guys wish on that.
Does staff know without having to open up? Oh, you are staff. We can talk to staff there. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clear. Sorry. The vegetation's actually already been cleared. We were going ahead with the fencing and then we found out that the height was too high. Our current code. So we were all set up to put in the fencing, took a step back. So. In some ways, the question isn't really, is it barbed wire or not barbed wired? It's, it's going to be either a six foot or seven foot fence. With the barbed wire on top. Because we already, as, as far as I understand, the code allows us currently to put in the six foot with a seven foot total height. We just want to raise it one foot additional. So we match the rest of the fencing.
Well, I think. People need to realize that we're dealing with a critical structure. And. That would certainly take preference over the aesthetic of settings on somebody's back, backyard. I would favor doing what they vanish.
So with the fact that the vegetation's been removed, would you then lean toward the slats or would you leave them out?
Out across, see the pond, see the park's ridge. I'd want to see everything.
I was just offering the slats as a piece price.
Yeah, well.
I don't have to put them in. I just wanted to clarify that.
You know, options are always good.
Yeah.
To know.
You know, I, I, I don't, I want to be a good neighbor too, I think.
Yeah.
With, and still, you know, complying with everything. So we're, we're kind of have a little bit of flexibility here. So.
They could plant like a road hedge behind their house to block it if they wanted to.
I mean, yeah, they could do whatever they want.
Clarification on those homes, if you go and look in person, two of them are burnt out. Shells, there's nobody living in them. So it actually affects less residents than the aerial picture implies. That I don't, I don't know, but I don't believe any of the children live in any of the homes that are adjacent. They're farther in the complex. I, I could be mistaken on that, but that's my impression on observing them.
And we could put vegetation, we could come back with trees. We just, if we put it on a proper line, we couldn't put it on their side without their permission. Then how do we water? Waters on our side defense. But we, we could come back and put. I mean, the idea is that we're putting barriers that, that are, that work well with others without. Causing any issues, but we do need to secure the front of those windows and everything.
I just think it's really asking Public Works to do way too much work overtime for potentially two property sites. When one, and, and I know aesthetics is important. But safety always comes first and this is a real priority. And so. Don't do what you plan to do. I'm fine with that. And don't.
Could change in the future too, that.
Have them to spend more money. I mean, they've got a budget.
And who knows what's coming in after that.
So they've got a plan, let them execute it.
I appreciate you sharing everything that you've done up until now, the information about the fence. Being, it's really just because it's higher, you're going to put barbed wire on it at their fence line, one way or the other. So that kind of. Changes my perspective, because either way, they're going to fence with barbed wire.
All right, this way it matches the existing, which.
Believe the security is important. I mean, for the people who live in those houses also, to keep people from parking in that parking lot, doing whatever they want to do. At when, you know, after hours and things like that, I think they will have a benefit as well.
And, and just to add to that, we've had the similar discussion on the improvement project we just did at the wastewater plant. We had a section of the fence with. Some concrete. Forms that was going to make our, our, our fencing a little bit taller. They had to be mounted in that. And so there was a few sections. I think it was going to be over seven feet. And we asked for the same thing and you guys granted it. So, and appreciated for that because we do need to have security and. You know, barbed wire and all those things on our, our facilities like this. So anyway, thank you.
I'm ready to set forth a motion to approve. I'd like to set a motion to approve the application VR twenty-three dash zero two and thereby permit the variance for the subject located on. At fifteen hundred forty-seventh avenue, Sweet Home Morgan, nine seven three eight six, identified on Lynn County's assessor's map as. Thirteen S zero one E two eight D tax lot two thirteen. Adopting the findings of fact in section three of the staff report, the setting of the twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision. And hereby direct the staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you did.
Thank you guys for everything.
Is staff building the fence or contracting out or?
Yeah.
We're, we're contracted.
Do it by hand. To have to do.
No, we'll have a, a company come in. We've already got a quote from them. We've already selected. We actually had to go out and get three quotes. And so we're just kind of holding. And they'll put the electric fence in or the, the, the gate and all that, everything along with it. So. But thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
All right. With that being said and completed, are there any upcoming staff updates? Sweet.
All right. Mark's master plan is still moving forward. We just had a meeting this morning. We're meeting with them once a month or twice a month? Once a month. And then we're meeting with the, for the transportation system plan once a month also with the consultants there. And that's. Moving forward, gradually slowly but surely. So those projects are going well. We recently applied for a grant with Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Sankey Park. For additional, for a replacement of the bandstand and for some additional trails and especially ADA accessible trails. That will connect the upper portion of the park to the lower portion of the park. Angela did a fantastic job with the application and giving the presentation to the state. And so cross your fingers, we're hoping for that. We are having an event on the twenty ninth of July to thank the donors for the previous work that was done in this park. And so.
Are those on your desk?
No.
So it's ten o'clock, right?
Eleven.
Eleven, eleven o'clock on the.
Email you all out and invite.
Saturday, July twenty ninth, I believe.
Yes. I, I will miss that unfortunately, but. Sure.
So you, everyone is welcome to attend.
Yes, the twenty ninth at eleven o'clock.
So there, the city has gone ahead to and, and developed some camping spaces in Quarry Park just to get the. Park, get it started to be used as a park. And so we are. That is available now for people who are looking for a place to do camping. It's dry camping only. We don't have any. The only, the only amenities there is just the natural land that's there. And then I believe there are some porta potties. On that site. So there's, there's no potable water available or power or anything like that for camping. So it's very much primitive camping. And that's available now as we speak. So. So you, you can't get through it through twenty-fourth avenue. You'd have to access through Clark Mill. Go to Clark Mill Road, go to the end to Zalkova and turn left on Zalkova and, and go in that way.
So you're going in by the old Knife River entrance.
And, and that area is open during the day for day use as well. So there are folks who go in there and. Are kayaking in the ponds and hiking through. And that's pretty much fine. Yeah. So it's, we're, we're just starting to get used into there. And as we move forward with various plans, we'll hopefully. Get some more, the, the use will help. You know, solidify in the public's mind what they would like to do with the property and. And help us to, to get further funding for developing that as a park.
That's the plan.
So might we put in power and water at some point?
Eventually, yes, there, there, the, the, everyone would like that to be fully developed as a, as a park facility. With running water, power. It's, the only question is how much of it will be used for camping? How much will be used for other purposes? What other? Things will be added to it. There's talk of ball fields to do sports tourism and other things. So. But that's all a bit further down the road. We're in the middle of getting the wetlands delineated on that property. To see what we have to work with when it comes to actually being able to develop it. So, yeah. More, stay tuned. There'll be more coming. Other than that, most of my time in Greg's, I think, has been spent on this painting project that you've probably heard about. That's. Been, it's a massive undertaking and we're getting a great response. We're very excited that we have. Thirty-six properties that have signed on to be painted. And, and provided signed waivers and everything that we can go ahead and paint their buildings.
So here's a quick question. Is, is the rumor or fact that people don't get to choose the color? Is that true?
That is true.
So they're just saying.
Because we're not going to go get custom paint for every single site. We have a.
Selection list of.
We have a color palette that we've developed with Miller Paint. Specifically colors that are designed to work well together with, you know, a main color and a trim color.
Right.
But also colors that will look good next to each other, but not too similar. And so the idea is to have this palette in place so that multiple properties can all be painted. We can do it efficiently because we have a limited number of colors. I believe there's ten colors total. And that way, we, we're, we're also not, we're, we're asking, we're, we're providing this palette to all the participants and saying. Give us your top three choices for a body color and a top three choices for a trim color. We're not guaranteeing that they will be able to have that color. What we are telling people is we will do your, our best to honor your wishes. However. We are trying to coordinate all of these properties and we want to make sure that we spread these colors around. We want to make sure that we don't have carbon copies of, of different buildings. And so, and we're also, part of the project is Miller Paint has provided color consult, consulting services. To really show what these can look like. No doubt, many of you have seen examples of buildings that were painted the wrong color.
Yeah.
And it's very, it's, it is, it takes skill to be able to select a color that looks good for an exterior color. And it's very, it's, it is, it takes skill to be able to select a color that looks good for an exterior color. For one thing, it's, it's one thing when it's inside your house and it's just your, your regular at home lighting. But when you have something that's outside. And the sheer size of some buildings, you could, if you, one color might look good when you paint a test patch. And then when you put it on a huge wall, suddenly you're overwhelmed by whatever color you pick. We're trying to avoid at all costs, things like that. And so it may be a little bit paternal, paternalistic to say we're going to pick the colors, but you know what? It's a free paint job.
You know, yeah, exactly. You've got a thirty-three percent chance of getting your color and you're not having to pay for it. Right. So.
Owners, um, also participating in the painting? Are they required?
We are in, they're not required to. There are some, on the waivers, there are some things that we're asking them to do when it comes to participating. It's either. Um, or to either, you know, help volunteer, help with the project. Or perhaps make their display spaces in their building available for showcase or other artists to display things or. Something that will add more to the downtown. So. Um, the great, the really great news from yesterday is that Fitzpatrick Painting, and I want to say their name as much as possible, especially if they come through on this. Um, Fitzpatrick Painting has committed to provide a four man painting crew in Sweet Home for ten weeks. So, um. At, at, at no cost to the city. And so we, uh, want to give them as much advertising as possible because it's very generous. And we are very excited about that development because trying to arrange. Volunteers for this many properties and trying to, to make sure that we have a professional job is a Herculean task. And I'm glad that they will be ta, doing the lion's share basically of it. So. So we're still taking, uh, we're still wanting volunteers. And we're still going to be having volunteers work on, on buildings, but, um, we're hoping to have a good portion done by them.
Is building prep included in this or is that something that the building owners are, are?
So we are, uh, we are pressure washing building, buildings. Um, and that is the main extent of the prep that we are doing. Um, some property owners have requested to have their properties done toward the end so that they can get some. Um, prep, some, some things fixed before they're, they're painted. And, and there are some that have decided not to participate mainly for that reason, that their buildings just aren't ready to be painted. They need to replace a whole bunch of siding because you don't want to just put paint over rotting wood. So. Um, in some cases in our downtown, the pain is what's holding the rotting wood together. So.
Agreed.
But, uh, it's best to fix those things before the paint happens.
Possible to meet and get together with this color coordinator.
So I sent out an email and you, I'm sure got a copy. Check your email. Uh, that has a copy of the, of the color palette. And then it has, uh, it's asking for you to pick your top three for both your main body color and a trim color. Um, we have the, the color coordinator has, uh, the color consultant has provided some images of some properties. Unfortunately, uh, Henry, not yours, but, um. But some of them, and so we do have some images from them and I can provide that to you if you'd like to see it, to, to see what, um.
And just to add to what Blair says, if we need an additional color consultant, they said they do over twenty of them and we've only done just, I think, a handful of them. So if we had. Something that needed to be rendered a little bit more. Talk with Blair, we can work those things out.
And I apologize for being personal when we're talking about.
Sure.
Community project, but we do have to paint the south wall and.
Yeah, the great.
Kind of making plans to just do that, not at somebody else's expense. But we're also putting on awnings, as you know. And, uh. I, I would love to have a color coordinator say, this is our suggestion, so I can take it to a tenant. And hopefully get our minds together, which isn't always easy. And then I'm going to go to another subject completely off the subject. I wonder if either individually or if the city could contact the property owners. In the twelve hundred block. Now, one of the most unsightly things we have in the city are all of the awnings that are in that block. And I certainly perceive that if the city had some participation, which they probably do. Maybe those property owners could. Consider putting on something like the Pike's awnings. And these are awnings like you're seeing on McDonald's and Alco Time and the coffee shops. Now they're pretty modern and really nice looking.
And we, I, I would love for those awnings, for a lot of awnings to be replaced. And I'm hopeful that through, uh, through this project. Um, that a lot of property owners will, uh, realize the, the investment that's been made in their property owner, in their properties for free. And will also be interested in, um, in making those improvements. We are inviting all participants to apply for SEEP grants to improve exterior portions of their properties. And so hopefully we can get some things moving in that area. I do know the block that you're talking about. And yes, that awning, those awnings really need to be worked out. The great thing about this is that it's, this project is kind of forced the city to have, to, um, do a lot of outreach and. Usually what, what's, what people don't realize is that most of the time with properties, the only record, the only records we have are whatever's on the tax rolls. And so we have some names, sometimes names that don't actually apply to any living people or any actual people. It's like a business name or something like that. And addresses and, um, getting response to, getting somebody to respond to mail is, is really difficult. And so the, the great thing is, is now through this process, all the participating properties, I've got phone numbers and email addresses of all the property owners. And it's making getting in contact with them a lot easier. And so we will be, um, reaching out to them on other things as well. And, and use this information to coordinate.
I would be reluctant to go there and say, I'm representing the city, but if you need any help, I would volunteer.
You know, testimonials are a real thing and really effective. And so i, if you talk to anyone who owns property and you introduce yourself as a fellow property owner in the area. And express what you've done with the city and what the city has provided, um, that goes a long way to help people realize, yes, there's help to improve your property. And, um, and everyone's welcome to apply for.
They may not know about the street improvement program.
Right. And a lot, a lot don't. It's, it's amazing. We talk about it all the time and there's so many people who still don't realize it's there.
Well, we could get a list from you of the properties in the twelve hundred block.
I know exactly who owns them. Yeah. Some of them are local even.
Which one's the twelve hundred block?
He's talking about next to, next to Sunshine Espresso, between Sunshine Espresso and, uh, and Steelhead, right?
And you've just got all of these different can, awnings and canopies out over the sidewalk. And some of them are tipped and they're. All individual and different ones. And, and they would dress up the city.
The way those buildings are all designed, they're all designed to have transom windows right off of, that are above that awning.
Yeah.
And they were all built the same way. And frankly, if we could get all of them on board together to do something consistent across those properties, it could really have a big impact.
Believe that owner lives up Mandina.
I get the less.
Depends on which one, those, that's actually, there's actually four different, it's four different owners of all of them.
All right. Any other updates or?
That's enough.
All right. Anybody has?
Nobody has anything else?
We'll look to close the planning commission meeting for July sixth at seven twenty-eight.